Call them at each order if you would with standing.
I pledge allegiance to the citizens of the United States of America and to every public who stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What call please?
Kushner.
Here.
Osborne.
Here.
Latari.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Euler.
Here. Proved regular city council metas dated June tenth, twenty twenty four.
Move to three.
Second.
Kushner.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes. Adoption of agenda.
Move to about.
Second.
Kushner.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, item five point one. An ordinance vacating right away for Charles Street running north and south adjacent to lot ten in Gallagher's second edition in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, and accepting in its place a dedication of a utility easement presented by Jason McCarty, project manager. Welcome, Jason.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The right of way in question was never developed by the city. It was very complicated, obviously, a long time ago with the stuff that was submitted with the ordinance. The current property owners at three sixteen Carlton Street cannot really feasibly build anything on the lot as it's a bit narrow. By vacating the right of way and putting in the easement for the existing utilities that aren't there would allow them to utilize the property to build out a residence there. So staff is requesting that you guys approve the ordinance as submitted and accept the utility in its place. Any questions for me?
Is this a piece of property? Have they owned it for some time? Or did they just purchase it?
I think they've owned it for about a year or so.
Thank you.
Any questions for Jason? Nope, nope.
Hi, Jason.
Move said ordinance be.
Second reading.
Second reading by title.
Kushner.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
An ordinance vacating right of way for Charles Street running north and south adjacent to lot ten in Gallagher's.
Yeah.
Gallagher.
Second edition, thank you, in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri, and accepting in its place a dedication of a utility easement. This is for adoption or rejection. Kushner.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item six point one. A resolution approving Stevenson Fund donation request by Teachers Warehouse of Johnson County in the amount of five hundred dollars presented by Jody L. Schneider, city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Um, once again, the Teachers Warehouse has submitted an application for Stevenson Funds. The five hundred dollar gift that's requested will go for teacher supplies for the Warrensburg R six school district. The Stevenson Fund, these funds are eligible pursuant to the Stevenson Fund last rule in testament. The funds are only to be used for charitable, educational, or library purposes. Do you have any questions?
The funds will be only, will be used only for the Warrensburg School District.
For Johnson, well, for Teachers Warehouse of Johnson County.
For all, any, any teacher eligible to go to the Teacher Warehouse.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
It, it says along with six other public school districts in Johnson County, sorry, their letter of request does.
Thank you. Motion to approve resolution.
Kushner.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Thank you.
Item seven, mayoral recommendations. Appoint Kelsey Lee as member of the Warrensburg Convention of Visitors Bureau for a three-year term through June twenty twenty seven. Appoint Annie Dillard as member of the Warrensburg Convention of Visitors Bureau for a three-year term through June twenty twenty seven. Appoint Cody Joloff as member of the Warrensburg Convention of Visitors Bureau for a three-year term through June of twenty twenty six. Reappoint Dana Phelps as a member of the Warrensburg Convention and Visit Bureau for a three-year term through June of twenty twenty seven.
I make a motion to approve the appointments as listed under number site, item seven.
Kushner.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Latari.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Euler.
Yes.
Thank you.
Appearances to the council not listed on the agenda. Brandon Myers, you step up and just state your name and your address, please. Thanks.
Good evening, my name is Brandon Myers and the address I'll use is one oh seven West Gay Street. It's one of the properties that I own here in town. I actually own several of them and tonight I just wanted to maybe come up and get some clarifications on a recent ordinance that was passed in December of last year concerning the short-term rentals for Warrensburg. I want to blindside you guys on the ordinance or anything I actually have a two poppies. If I can give them out to you, just that way you kind of follow along, maybe that might help.
Brandon, this is really an opportunity for them to have a back and forth conversation with you. It's just an opportunity for you to voice your concerns.
Okay.
And then if they would like to respond, they'll direct staff to do so.
Gotcha, okay, well, I guess the first question that I had on this was what exactly is this money going to be used for? The five percent tax that will be included on all of our guests coming into town now.
We can.
Go ahead and list all your questions.
List your question.
Okay. Several, uh, there were several things that were put into the ordinance that just seemed to be a little intrusive on it. Mainly to do with the yearly inspections that go through. I kind of understand the reasoning behind it on wanting to make sure that there is safe and secure properties that our guests are going to be staying in for the city along with the yearly fees of a hundred and twenty dollars or a hundred and twenty-five dollars per unit that goes through there. I guess the inspections that are involved in it, are these the same type of inspections that are done to the hotels that we have in town? Or done to any of the other properties that have anything to do with this similar business stance? Or is this a single out for short-term rentals only type of situation? The other question that I had was with a lot of the concerns on what needs to be placed inside the homes as an Airbnb owner. With this being such a last minute thing, because honestly, I had no idea that this had even happened until last week when I called the city on kind of an unrelated incident. With the way that we do our bookings, we have to have far in advance notice in order to be able to do these type of situations. From what I gathered on this, it is going to be done in January and February only. And once those inspections are completed, then there is a reinspection done after, after we complete our laundry list that they're going to give us for what we actually need to be done to our homes. If I go in and I cancel a reservation for a guest in order to be able to meet those requirements for the city to come in and do an inspection, I am then blacklisted on Airbnb. My business will no longer be advertised and they will also start canceling further in advance on any guests that I may have coming up. It is a huge strike against us to do that. The problem that I'm facing is I already have bookings for January and February of next year. In fact, I get bookings so far as a year and a half in advance, especially for things that go on at the college, contractors coming in to do work on the base, or just people coming in for birthday parties to be able to hang out with their kids in town. For this to be considered. It is very last minute. If we weren't going to be informed about this until the November, December timeframe. And then we also have to try to make room in our calendars and our schedules in order to be able to get the inspectors in. And it will have to be on our timetable, not so much, well, I'd like to set up an appointment, what date do you have? That doesn't work. The main thing that I'm asking, I guess, tonight, this is just a sample of the questions that I have going on. Two main questions, one, is there going to be some type of workshop that is going to explain what the city expects for our businesses and what we need to get ready for that inspection? And two, is there any possible way to maintain table this and delay it at least another six months? So that way we can get into later on in the year and actually be able to book these times out for the inspections to get done, or even just hold off a year and wait. I understand this is a tax revenue thing, I get it. I see other towns, they're starting to do it, especially in the big cities. I knew this was coming on, but to not give any information to any of the owners right now is just, I think, kind of ridiculous. And it's just, it's, it's blindsided us on it. I've only talked to one other Airbnb host that has any idea what this is going to be about. But those are my two main questions.
So Jody was taking notes, I have that you would like to know what our five percent logging tax is about. Talking through what the annual inspections look like and then wanting to know if there's going to be a workshop and that there were concerns about the timing of those inspections in January and February of twenty twenty five.
Yes.
Staff will prepare a response and we will get back to you if that's acceptable to City Council.
Absolutely.
Okay. Do I need to leave any contact information or anything like that?
Are those all your concerns?
You what?
Have you listed all your concerns so that we can do this?
I can, if you would like, I can email over something, I can list out all the questions and I'll title it straight to the ordinance that we've got.
That would be great.
That would be wonderful.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Brandon.
Thank you.
That was only, the only appearance not listed on the agenda. Item nine miscellaneous matters, matters from the mayor and or city council.
I think for me.
No.
Item ten, city staff updates.
So, as you know, we just wrapped up our budget presentation. We still have a few more departments to go. If council is open to hearing Parks and Recreation, we'd like to move forward with that presentation at this time.
Great.
Great. Now.
Would you like to answer that, I heard? I'll be yelling for you.
They have one over here, is it up behind Susan?
Yeah, probably in those bag.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members and members who are here. Happy to give some highlights of the Parks and Recreation Department for the preliminary part of our budget. And so as you have been seeing this evening, it is not completely developed at this time, and we'll continue to work on it. Just some history, some of you have seen much of this and some of you have not. Parks Department first established in nineteen thirty-one, so it's six and a half years off of one hundred years for the department. And we have a nine-member board, administrative board, with board members being appointed by the mayor and approved by the city council. The Parks Recreation Department oversees four hundred acres of parkland, which includes nine parks, trails, playgrounds, ballfields, Lions Lake, Community Center, and the outdoor pool. We have four divisions that we oversee within our budget. And that includes Parks Recreation, the general administrative fund, maintenance, and that is mostly park maintenance. And also NASF is in that division. Recreation programs, that's our largest division financially, and also then the community center. Our annual operating budget is approximately three point four million dollars. Last year was around three point two million, so that growth is based on new revenues. The budget goal for the Parks Recreation Department is to take care of what we have. That is our goal, add new park amenities as we are able to, as the budget will allow. But the first and most important thing for us is to take care of what we have. And the mission statement of Parks and Recreation is to provide quality recreation facilities and also opportunities for individuals, which will enhance their leisure and recreational pursuits. For the most part, this is what I would call a maintenance budget. In other words, it's a lot of the similar things you've seen before as far as caring for parks. But yet I feel exciting things in the future that we have for some capital improvement opportunities that we will talk about in a little bit. And so this presentation, you're mostly going to see proposed changes that are going forward for twenty-four, twenty-five that are a little bit maybe different than the previous year. One of the exciting things we have, we are proposing that we put in six more pickleball courts. We just opened six and they are pretty much full a lot of the time. One of the things that we're looking at doing is also painting the tennis courts. We already heard a couple of comments, don't leave us behind, we're not going to. And so as we put in these new pickleball courts, we're going to be painting the tennis courts and also putting up nets. That's the proposal within, in the budget. Also, the outdoor basketball courts, one of the things that our building and grounds committee has talked about is that a lot of times when the kids come up, especially during the summer, we have summer day camp and that's a hundred plus kids. And we do pretty much dominate a lot of the use of the gymnasium. So there's a real help place outside at Grover Park just to have somebody do a pickup game of basketball. And some of the kids that come to NASF, I will tell you, they're, they're all day. And so when they get bored and come outside, that's another thing we feel like it would be a neat thing for them to be able to play some basketball. So we're looking at that as well as maybe a couple other park locations, either half court or whole court. What we might be able to provide on existing asphalt or something that we would be able to build. And addition to that is renovation of the community center lobby area. And this is basically, you all have been into the community center. And when you come into the front doors, the lobby is wide open and you come over to the area to register. Also, there are side doors that are open from about seven in the morning until three in the afternoon for the senior center. And currently, we do not have a station right there with our park staff there. That's something that we need to do because unfortunately, sometimes people like to tend to just walk by without signing in. We need people to sign in, we also need a warmer greeting, we also need opportunities to just be able to make that adjustment. So you saw that on the budget of that total, or twenty thousand. But sixty thousand of that, we are going to be proposing come from the Marion Glazberg Foundation. So it would be a matching fund and it would be a really nice use. And it would also include upgrading the carpet and I think just presenting a whole new a whole new presentation for, for the, the lobby area and greeting the people coming in. And then the new fitness center equipment, we talked about a little bit, that is also going to be addressed, I'll cover that under, under the community center. Our preliminary operating budget for the entire Parks Recreation Department, two point four million dollars. This year is projected to be additional one hundred thirty-eight thousand and taxed for about thirty-two thousand dollars in fees and charges, which shows our programs are, are growing. We have placed, or excuse me, a plan for an increase in advertising for sponsorships. And our sponsorships have nearly doubled in the last two years as compared to previous years. And so that is very positive. One of the things we're looking at too is, had a lot of questions about our holiday lighting program that we have at Lions Lake, that was a lot of popular comments from the community. And we've also had a lot of people ask if they can be a sponsor to that, so. I mentioned we're going to be very careful to not have a bunch of sponsor signs all over the place that will take away from the beauty of the lights. But I think there's some very nice ways that we can do that, that can create some, some revenue and also some advertising opportunities. And we do anticipate growth of about twelve thousand dollars. Again, this preliminary budget numbers for the community center membership. I believe with the lobby upgrade will make a difference, also the indoor pool renovation, but that is, that is going to generate excitement with that very new looking facility. And so we are adding part-time employee position to be greeting that attendant for the senior center. That is just part-time and so as city manager commented before, we'll be talking about other full-time positions at a later date, but this is part-time for that area of supervision. And also software upgrade, this is being something we're researching that will work closely with City Hall. The software upgrade that we have right now, sometimes it's not as easy to coordinate night and forth with the finance department and also our overall tracking, so that's going to be a positive thing for, for us to do. And as stated, much of our park maintenance funding goes towards the, the care of our, our grounds and equipment. As the park board, the city council is aware, we are renewing the community, the pools right now in renovation. Actually, that work is going to be physically starting this next week and so we're very happy about that. And there are several other things that we are doing. One of the things we're looking at is being more proactive with the treatment of herbicides at Lions Lake. So there is not as much moss grow on there, we're working with a company to do that, so we feel very positive about that side of the maintenance. And also things such as the ABC building that we've looked at with building and grounds and our shelters and structures as well to be taken care of. It's just some pictures of the NASF pool. We host the swim meets there from the Piranha Swim Team. Last year was the regional, this year we'll be hosting that again. The project was completed last year for the renovation, that pool is holding up very nicely and is doing well. And also the NASF upkeep, as I said, is within the budget of maintenance division. And the very positive thing with that too is when we fixed up some things when I first got here. A little more back and we also not only fixed motors that were broke, but we also purchased additional ones. So when we have backup, excuse me, we have backup when we have breakdowns, we don't have downtime. And one of the biggest changes you're going to see in the Parks and Recreation budget is staffing. And that is because of our transition of aquatics. You'll see quite a jump as you would look in comparison to our part-time this year versus last year. But you will also see a four hundred and ten thousand dollar management service for aquatics that is also going away. So there's the trade-offs there. Our overall evaluation as we went through that is the savings for the Parks and Recreation Department. Our, in our most popular programs, that continue to be summer day camp, team sports, and special events. And with the addition of pickleball courts, we're actually already working on a term up here in the next few weeks. Month and a half, maybe. Community Center Division, City of Warrensburg celebrates twenty-five years, we did that this last year, two thousand twenty-two, year and a half ago. Our building supervisor, you've heard this before, so we have a big difference in our after-school, we also use this at the outdoor pool. And we will be expanding some part-time hours there as well, but this has really helped in regards to just the overall supervision. And also the aquatics division has added other programs that come into our daily operations. At the indoor pool, you're going to see more opportunities for members, classes that you'll do there. And then under capital improvements, it's helped that the new entrance, once again, will make a difference in the increase in our overall membership. Other changes, you may recall that we, that we completely redid the the, excuse me, the outdoor pool, I already mentioned that before, but also the fitness area, the sixty thousand dollars of the Glazberg equipment. And that's made a big difference in regards to the number of people coming in using the facility. This next budget year, we are adding more, as we mentioned over there earlier, to the electronic core equipment. Park Board approved, this is from the past, ten percent off for corporate memberships at the community center. And we go to companies, we've sent out information for them to, if they have a fiber more that are interested, we give them ten percent off as a group to join the community center, also approved ten percent off membership for military. Also ten percent off for if you're a member of the community center, then there's ten percent off at NASF. Which is, really values both the community center and NASF. And all of these percentage endeavors make a difference of the money we're able to use and put back into our services to the community. So Parks and Recreation's staff and the park board are very optimistic towards future Parks and Recreation Department. And happy to answer any questions, you may.
I have a question regarding, I know that you did the concessions much differently, you contracted it out or made an agreement with an individual to run concessions and also that you have food trucks coming to some of the, the games. How's that working out for you? I'm, I'm hearing good things.
The thing I like about it is it's providing a service. It also takes a bit of the burden away in regards to having enough staffing to be there. Like when you pay for concessions at ball field games, they usually lose money. You don't, it's providing a service. It's different at a pool because they're there all day long and concessions can get a net revenue. So this has worked out very well because the families that are doing it, went out at West Park, sometimes they will do Lions. They've enjoyed it, they're doing well, and the food trucks have also reported that they like being able to come by there. They just contact us and let us know, we do our best at scheduling it. But we've had positive comments, I think some things we'll look at and do different for next year. But right now, I believe that it's nice that we're providing that opportunity.
Absolutely. With the pool upgrade, the indoor pool, is that expected to be completed by the end of the summer?
At this point, the contract in is August thirty-one.
Okay.
That's scheduled at this time.
And do you expect that in the fall, you'll be able to provide with the pool being available, swimming lessons? Because I think people miss not having the swim lessons for the kids.
Yeah, yes, we, we are actually, it's got to go to some, some lessons the best we can for the outdoor pool, but we will be when we open, we'll be doing our full services. That'll be swim lessons, swim team from the high school, swim team from Piranhas as well. Swim team from the high school, swim team from Piranhas, as well as our morning lap swim, water aerobics, all the things that we normally do. Now we look forward to doing.
And then just one more thing, the Legion Field, um that's now available for the Park Department to schedule?
Uh yes, uh Councilman Jones, thank you very much for that contact. Um and making that um. And making that contact with the individual from the Legion. They said they were just fine with us doing whatever we wanted to do to use those fields. It belongs to the city anyway. But there was some history there. And and now he felt like that that history has gone away. And so now we're going to be able to schedule those fields, so I'm very excited about that. So thank you for your assistance.
Yeah, that's great news.
I have a couple of questions if I may.
Yes.
With the addition of the pickleball courts, how many tennis courts will remain?
We will still have um four uh four tennis courts.
Okay, and I you'd mentioned the corporate membership and the military discount. Is there a discount for seniors?
Honestly, I'm gonna have to look at that.
Okay.
Rock top my head.
I appreciate you. Thank you.
I should know.
I I think there is on the on the uh, there used to be on the fee schedule.
Oh yes, I'm sorry. I mean, on the actual um schedule, yes, there is a discount born. Uh those who are. Oh, under. You fifteen and under and the senior is same price. If you're gonna get a membership.
And just a quick question that someone had asked me and I've heard a couple other people ask about. The potential of fencing uh for safety, fencing the. Inclusive playground portion at Cave Hollow Park. I know fencing is expensive and um but I just wondered if that's something that. Might be able to fit into this year's budget or perhaps next year's if that's something you've considered or if there would need to be a study about that. I I don't know, but folks have asked me and so I'm asking.
Yeah, I and this is uh something I've heard of before and it makes sense. Um the um especially, you know, the. Playing tell the way it was introduced to me that differently able, an opportunity for them to be able to relax when that opportunity is there for pets. So that is something the building grounds is going to be discussing. We're also looking at the possibility of doing another sensory trail. Uh out at uh Hovren Park and we're looking at something similar uh for that same reason on that um. Area of uh that goes into the drainage area.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Yes, we will look at that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh I, yeah, I have an. Uh let's do E D first before I launch into the wire.
There was just one item in the economic development budget. There's not a presentation for this. Um that's a budget that's shared across several areas. It includes. Our retail recruitment efforts, our community agreements with other organizations. You'll hear more about that um with our next meeting. And um. It includes the area where we budget for the downtown facade grants. And so to for that project, uh for that five thousand dollars. For the fiscal year twenty five, uh staff has proposed that we not run the grant program. Um the city's five thousand be used for other downtown. Uh items that come up throughout the year that are uh requests of Main Street or or staff identified needs. That that money would still be spent in the downtown area, but it would be spent on uh pro- uh. Needs that the city identifies or or requests that come from from Main Street. As you're aware, many of you are aware, we have tried to tweak that grant program every year. And. Probably the last two or three years have tried to tweak that grant program so that we're. Drawing more projects that are substantive in nature and preserving our buildings and not. Paying for awnings and signs and uh those continue to be roughly half. Of our applications over the last eleven years have been for awnings and signs, uh which does not do a lot towards protecting the buildings. And and preserving that stock in our community as was the intent of the original program. Additionally, we continue to see the same um. More or less the same applicants year after year and um. We're. We're looking to to try to. To fund those projects that the city has a need for. And so we're we're not, especially as we tried to tighten the reins on projects, our type of projects we're funding. Um and we're saying no to more people, so we awarded two grants in this current cycle. Uh both are five thousand dollar level grants. One was to Arrozias for the painting and touch pointing that he did on his building earlier this year. Uh that was contracted out to Jason Elkins and so he can receive that five thousand dollars. And then the other project funded was um Charles Norton's project uh for the next door agents on the three, I think it's three nineteen. Is the I might have the actual address wrong, but on the north end of Holden there, Holden and Gay Street. And um he's not submitted for its reimbursement yet, but that was the other project funded. So um there were several individuals who were not funded because those two were larger projects. Um they weren't awnings or signs types projects. Uh so there were several that were not funded and um. And and so as we were saying no to those, instead of um building goodwill in the community, we are. We are building ill will in the community by not funding those projects that have been typically funded over the last ten years. Uh so this is uh an idea that staff has for the coming year to try and and see uh what results we would get from that.
Would this be the facade and the um? Was it uh windows?
The window replacement grant, um that was in the community, that was budgeted under community agreements in the community development grant. Or in the community development budget and uh we have not had any uh. We had one application this year um that was ineligible to apply. And that the work was already completed before they applied and they no longer own the building, which they were applying for. So we did not fund that. Uh we haven't had any other applications, so in the two years we've had the program, we've. Funded one, received two legitimate requests last year. One was completed and funded and then received one uh that we couldn't fund this year because it wasn't a qualified application, so. Uh we have not recommended funding it in the next year either. That was part of what we cut out of the community development budget.
Thanks, Barbara.
Thank you very much.
We're not, uh we don't have to make a decision on that at this time, so if you have any additional thoughts uh about staff recommendation on that. Please let us know. Um great idea of presentation in the budget or in the folder for my next item.
Uh one question, how much was in each of those programs? Was it five thousand in each program?
Yeah, the city puts in five thousand for the downtown facade grant program and three thousand for the window replacement program. And then Main Street in the past few years says put five thousand into the facade grant program as well.
Thank you.
So that does conclude uh our department budget presentations uh for the general fund and for parks. Uh we will come back to you all uh within the next couple of weeks or so at one of our other meetings um with uh water pollution control. Um as I mentioned, uh water pollution control, we did get an update. Um on the project that we're working on on McGuire. And you all recall, we recently came to you all with an amendment. To our C M R contract and our engineering contracts from McGuire. Asking um to be able to do some investigation and an assessment of the condition of the sanitary sewer under McGuire. Uh we had gotten some initial field work, we've gotten some a feeling that that would be uh a worthwhile. Investment on our behalf and um these next several slides certainly prove that that was true. Um so as we uh C C T V'd um the uh sanitary sewer lines. Uh they were rated a a high priority to repair medium and low and then these gray areas are could not access. Uh I'm going to zoom in on these different sections here and talk a little bit about them, but this is just. The overview of that McGuire Street corridor as a reminder, uh we are starting uh just south of Young Street. And then ending um just north of Broad Street. Um this is one of the biggest investments we have made in our community, so we're looking at. Um new asphalt, new stormwater, um relocating our overhead um utilities. Uh really bringing up that corridor and improving the aesthetic and making that a more functional um arterial uh in our community. So one of the things we want to avoid um is in putting all of that investment in asphalt and concrete. And new driveways and new drive approaches over sanitary sewer that is failing. Uh when the sanitary sewer or any of those other uh infrastructure base layers that are underneath the asphalt start to fail. Um that makes the asphalt crack or if something were to fail and we would have to dig it up and the last thing we want on our brand new roadway is a patch, right? So um this is Fermerson Street to Emerson Street along McGuire. Uh red is a high priority. Uh this street is um collapsed. We are or this sanitary sewer has demonstrated uh breaks, cracks, fractures. Um I'm gonna show you some pictures of what we saw. Um the yellow, very similar. Uh we do have a little Patrick green there.
Danielle, maybe explain to everybody here what age that sewer system is.
Yes, so this uh sewer system is about seventy years old. One of the other things that uh we discovered uh through this investigation is that it is seventy years old, it is clay pipe. Uh one of the things that we did not have a full appreciation for that was detailed on our plans that we had is actually most of the line is only four inches. So uh Missouri Department of Natural Resources, their minimum standard is eight inches now.
You mean it's only four inches around or it's only four inches down?
It's only four inches around. Uh we cannot believe um and some of these pictures that we're gonna show you, honestly, we cannot believe that we have not been having. Uh more issues with sewer along the McGuire Street corridor uh some of our businesses. Um so. You know, one of the things that we had talked about uh was being able to line and we didn't, we could line because it was too shallow and vibrations and what. Well, since it's only four inches, uh we can't really line it because then that reduces your circumference and how much you can get through there. And then also because of some of the deflections and some of these other um integrity issues that we have with the blade pipe. It's just not, um you you can't get that lining, that technology is not meant for lines that are only four inches. That's one of the challenges um that we have for seventy year old pipe. Uh. So this is an example, uh so here we have the green, um that's a four inch, uh we think it's a community line, you think that the. Uh Show Me Realty, the house behind Show Me Realty and Sonic might all be on the same community line um here. Uh at that corner of North and McGuire. Uh there are no manholes, so access points. So again, those bins that you see are actually um not breaks and so again to like access it, to get anything. To line down there would be very challenging. Fortunately, that is green, so that's um in good shape. We do think we will be able to salvage that. Um but we are concerned that it is only four inches and so we are going out to do some additional investigation, dying and actually seeing. Uh which businesses are going into that community line there. So the gray area that you see, uh we were actually not able to get our camera down that because it is in such bad shape. So we do not know exactly what that looks like, um but that's a pretty good indication that it's bad.
And it's bad right in the middle of those two.
Yes, and it is bad right in the middle. Uh you'll recall, uh we did have that emergency repair in front of Wendy's, so that's uh in front of Wendy's there. That was the emergency repair that we had to make uh when we were out there, we discovered that, so. Um again, um some line that was in such bad condition, we were not actually able to get the camera down it. Uh from Market Street to Colton Street there. Uh from Rover to Grover, although it is small, um it is only four inches, uh it is in good shape. We do think after reviewing this one. Uh that this will uh last us another ten to twelve years. Um so that is something we are going to take a look at. Is ten to twelve years long enough or if we are going to be investing um in replacing the sanitary sewer? Is this something we want to go ahead and include? So that we can upside it to what Missouri Department National Resources uh minimum standard is, which is that eight inches.
Could you go back one slide, please? So this market to Colton and then what's that, is that bad portion, is that along Colton?
Yes.
The red, yeah.
Yes, that is along.
That's east. Houston McGuire on Colton, okay.
And so you don't round your corners so so that with slowing, it has to make a like a hard left or a hard right?
I'm not gonna say, I'm not gonna say that it's a ninety degree angle or forty five degree angle. Some of them are pretty sharp. Um that you did see some of those angles that they're coming in at. Um but this is really just a graphic representation, so. I wouldn't read too much into um that log question. But yes, some of them are teeing and we do know um so for example, where this uh Colton Street heads into um. Across McGuire and where that access, where it says we couldn't get down that pipe, we know there's not a manhole there, so that's certainly a concern where we have a T. That we can't access with a manhole because that would be an area where we could potentially have issues. Um so Grover, um and remember, I just found out this information this morning, but wanted to take the opportunity to share because we are gonna have to make some decisions pretty quickly. Because we are against a timeline and a schedule. Um so this is Broad Street, it is a medium priority. Uh we do know that this is the end um of our corridor and so we might be able to talk about um as we're putting costs together, including this in a future phase. Since it is in a little bit better condition than some of those high priority areas or some of those areas that we cannot access.
Is it still a four inch?
Yes, it's all four. So let's take a look at some of these pictures um along here. Remember, this is inside a sanitary sewer line, so it is dark, dank place. Um and some of your images might be very difficult, but I'm gonna try to walk you through uh what we are seeing and the challenges that we have. So um you'll see that cracked longitudinal hinge. Um so they were explaining to us that that means. Um that we have breaks at all four corners, so or all four points. So we have a break at noon, six, three and nine. And so that is very concerning. And then in the picture on the right, you can certainly see where there are cracks. Uh multiple cracks along the top, you see that big crack just underneath that A. And then really along again there at three o'clock, you'll see a lateral crack in that line. So cracks uh lead to fractures. So fracture, you can start to see uh where the pipe is starting to shift. Right? So where you had a crack and now you're starting to see where it is shifting and moving. Uh we have multiple fractures in this part of the line here. And then fractures lead to breaks and so that is actually where you see that dark um area that is actually soil. Uh where part of the pipe is no longer there. And uh I think picture there on the right is pretty self explanatory where we have um soil that is inside of our um sanitary sewer line there. Um so it's effective tap. So this is actually a tap, a service line that is tapping inside our um. Tapping into the main and so this is not necessarily an issue with our sewer main. But this indicates that there is certainly trouble of line on the lateral service line and so um. The comment that was shared with us today is smushed or crushed. It's not a technical term that we use in um sanitary sewer. Condition assessments, but this certainly would indicate that that lateral line has been smushed. One of the other things that we take a look at are deflections and so um sewer pipe is. We put it in and and sticks uh links the pipe. Um so you can see uh imagine you're the camera and you're looking straight down a paper towel. Roll right, you would expect to see straight through. So when you see that blocked and you're not really able to see straight, that's because the sewer line is. We started to put in the pipes, we've started to get a natural deflection and it's no longer in a straight line. So that is another challenge that we have um. So that is another challenge that we have, uh, when we're trying to clean out, when we're trying to line, um. So something, there are sometimes you, you do engineer deflections on purpose, uh, but not particularly to this extent. Uh, you can kind of tell actually in the middle one where it goes, you get a deflection to the right and then you can tell you the next pipe you get a deflection to the left. So. Um, this is a stack. So this is actually where the pipe is starting to sink. And we're starting to see it hold water and not drain properly. So we saw a lot of, um, instances of this. Along the Maguire Street corridor as well. So. So the thing I would like to share, uh, with city council this, this evening. And again, not looking for any decision, but just an opportunity to share, uh, with you all while you're sitting here in the room this evening. Um, we budgeted, uh, one point two million dollars, uh, for retirement of the Enterprise Lift Station. In FY twenty four. Um, that Enterprise Lift Station is over there, um, behind our woods. I'm going to provide you guys kind of where we would, we've talked about, um, where we would actually take that offline and extend the main to connect. That part of town and it would extend all the way to Cahill and then go on to the East, um, wastewater treatment plant. So one of the things that we have talked about, um, as staff today and brainstormed. We have not actually put any, uh, documents out on this. We're still in negotiations with property owners for easements. Um, for that particular project. Um, it might make sense to us to reallocate, uh, our funds to, instead of doing the Enterprise Lift Station retirement. To reallocate those funds that we've already allocated in FY twenty four to really focus on the sanitary sewer issues. That we have along Maguire Street. Um, one of the, um, when we had originally said, you know, we really need to look into the condition of the sanitary sewer along Maguire. We talked about it wasn't very deep and some of them were only about eighteen to twenty four inches deep, some of them were only three feet. We want to drop that. That was approximately eight hundred thousand dollars. Um, looking at the extent, um, and the terrible condition that it is in, uh, we are now looking at closer to one and a half million dollars. Um, to be able to drop, um, some of those sewer lines to get those at a better elevation. But really replacing all that four inch line where we're having, um, all those, those cracks, those breakages. That, uh, soil coming into those lines. Because the last thing we want, uh, I got to mention before is for the sanitary sewer to fail, um, below our brand new road.
And that one point two would be for the entire length of the Maguire? Basically, the entire length of the Maguire?
Those areas that we just identified, um, that were, yeah, um, for the book, not the entire length of Maguire, but for phase, that first phase, um, that we're overseeing.
Okay, phase one of the Maguire. So it would be the entire length of phase one because all of it is only four inches.
Yeah, and there's a little bit of six inch in there, but most of it's on.
Okay, oh my god.
And that's from, so just remind me, please, from where to where is phase one?
Yes, so again, just south of Young. So we're starting at about Fermerson Street. Um, and then we will go to, just, uh, Broad Street.
Gotcha, thank you.
So, um, something, uh, for council to think about over the next, um, several months. But that would be, you know, we can, we can continue to try to identify funds, um, in the W P C for next year. But also understanding, um, we are working with time schedule here. Um, because of the extent of this project, it would likely require, uh, permit from the Missouri Department of Natural Resources. Which is a sixty day minimum.
Oh boy.
Or sixty day maximum review. Sorry, they have to have a response back to us within sixty days. So that is already, um, a two month delay that we, we're not anticipating. Uh, we do think that we might be able to ask for a case determination. Um, so what that means is, um. We're, we're kind of in this gray area, right? We're not expanding our sewer system. We're not adding additional subdivision. We're not adding another industrial park. Um, but we are also not just replacing life with life because we want to replace four inch line with eight inch line. Um, and so we're wanting to upgrade our system. So we're kind of in this gray area where we might be able to get a case determination where they would not necessarily require that full sixty day review. Uh, again, these are all conversations we just started having this morning, uh, but wanted to take an opportunity to share. I know you all were eager. You all asked about it the other day. So I knew you all were eager.
But it is an opportunity to get to code or the, the, anyway, the requirements of eight inch anyway.
Yeah.
And we said, that we said this project all along was beautification on one side, the other's infrastructure. And when you have seventy year old pipes down there, it's not going to get better.
No.
We're just lucky it hasn't gotten worse at this point.
I, I, uh, I look at, I cannot believe, again, when we found that issue that we had in front of Wendy's. Really, gosh, I can't believe Wendy's isn't having our issue here. Um, and again, um, a lot of these, we cannot believe that. We haven't experienced, people haven't been having backups. We haven't had.
Yeah.
We are starting to see some of that sinking, right, on Maguire. We know that. Uh, where we've done some patching on some potholes along the side there. So we, we do see that, um, that truly with. The way the soil is coming in and seeing some of that even from the lateral service lines. Just really surprised that we are having more folks with sewer issues.
Well, we knew there'd be Easter eggs on Maguire Street when you're tearing it up. We knew that from the start. Cause there's no way, as long as that road's been in place, that something scary wasn't there. And I'm just hoping this is all.
We can't give it back to the state either, right? So.
No, no, they're not, and they're not taking.
We don't want it back.
They're not, they're nothing back.
Can the, um, funds be used from the sewer? To the sewer fund to pay for this?
Yeah, so that's what our, our recommendation is to use W Water Pollution Control money. The money that we get, um, by providing that sanitary sewer service, um, that utility. Um, and we take in money to maintain and repair. And so we had planned for that Enterprise Lift Station project, um, to be paid for this year. Um, like I said, we are only in negotiations with property owners at this time. Um, we have not, you know, issued an R F P, um, or, you know, put out a bid, um, to complete that project. Yeah. So it would be a good time to kind of take that and we already have the engineering done. Um, so we can just take that project and put it back on the shelf for another three to five years or so. So, uh, we would look at what it would take to get the Enterprise Lift Station, um, up and running. Um, to get it through another three to five years before we put that project back on our capital improvement plan list. Um, so there would be some expense in twenty, uh, twenty five to, you know. Get, I know we were talking like, we only have, we only have four inch, uh, lines out there that we need six inch lines because we're not getting the right suction. Um, I know that they've been having, um, the, the pump was sucking air the other day. Um, I'm not sure exactly what that means. Um, but that is what they shared with me. And so we would be doing, um, some investigation to see what it would take, uh, to get that. Cause right now we are doing a lot of maintenance. It is breaks down quite a bit and keep that lift station up and running. So we would look at making an investment, um, into making sure that that lasted us another three to five years, maybe even five to seven. Um, but, uh, instead of that retirement, looking at reallocating those funds. To make these sanitary improvements along the wire.
What do you need from us and at what timeframe? I mean, what are we?
Um, I wanted to just make you all aware of that. We will probably bring something next, back to you next city council meeting. Um, it will look like a, it'll probably be an amendment to Burns and McDonald's, uh, contract again, um, to do the engineering on this. Um, and then also adding, uh, to our C Mar contract, uh, with capital. Um, but this is a, it is going to be a big number. And so we wanted to bring that forward to you all and give you all a heads up.
We'll, uh, we'll be able to handle the.
Yes.
Of that or their sub, like a sub handle it so that they can work as you go on through, build it as you go. Cool.
I didn't hear, and what did you ask?
Pardon me?
I didn't hear.
If the, our contractor would have the capabilities to be able to do this as they go.
Oh.
Obviously, we still have a lot of work to do. Uh, we just had this conversation this morning.
Right.
So, um, I obviously want to check with Doug and make sure we don't run into any, uh, procurement issues. Because this would be a pretty significant change order to both of their contracts. So.
Wouldn't it fall under emergency? Where some.
But we feel pretty confident. We know the problems at this point.
Yeah, I, I think we all knew, um, it was probably in pretty bad shape. I think the big surprise is that it's only four inch. Um, and then also how much we weren't even able to access just because it's already. Broken and collapsed so much that we couldn't even get a camera down it. Um, you know, we don't have enough manholes. So it might just be one collapse at that point, but the next manhole that we had was further down. So to use this as, uh, this. Uh, you know, we couldn't from the green line. Uh, you know, that maybe there's just a collapse right there, um, and we couldn't get the camera down that far. But the chances are it's in pretty bad shape. So.
I said both.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Did all the tear a bunch of the I N I problems there?
Yes, there.
What if, that's horrifying, what if after we repair these lines? And they're functioning the way they're supposed to be functioning? What if that impacts the amount of, you know, effort that is going out to other, other lines? That previously it's been apparently sinking into the soil or we don't know, getting fogs, getting, you know, staying there. What if that impacts? So if it's functioning, if it's functioning great, but then how does that impact everything that connects to it?
So just a, you know, just a reminder, um, that, uh, we are still working towards phase two. Which would be north of Fermerson and include, um, the interchange. And so we will know that we need to include sanitary sewer investigation, um, as we are starting that phase of this project. Same with the part, um, that would be south of Broad, uh, which would be another, um, future base, knowing that we need to include, um, that Broad Street line. In there as well. Um, so we will know that we need to include the sanitary sewer, um, in that basement project as well. Uh, we do get a little relief as we get away from the Maguire Street corridor because then we are on residential lines and, um. We know they're still clay. We still know that we have challenges, uh, in a lot of the older parts of the city and we are up against that. But, um, just really troublesome with those four inch lines, um, with that. All that commercial.
So the study that they will do, Prince McDonald will do, will include this, um, determining. When we go from a four to an eight inch, uh, pipe and that is now running into. Uh, a current existing pipe that it's not going to blow it out.
Right, so that's, uh, that's why, uh, you'll see, so you'll see that there's good, good pipes. You got your red pipe and then you got your green pipe there. And so, uh, where that green pipe, we are, that's not being represented, it's going to be repaired or fixed. So they will make sure, um, that the appropriate connection is there. So that's probably a four inch, a leading into a six inch, you would have an eight inch that led into a six. Um, there, they would make sure they had all the appropriate connections and making sure that we don't have these challenges.
Cause this can really snowball.
It can, it can. And that's why we are, um, chasing, um, that's a term I learned today a little bit. Um, oh, I don't, I don't have that one in there. So they do already have, um, a recommendation and they are chase, chasing some of the sanitary sewer line. Um, down some of those side streets to make sure they drop those as well, to make sure we get an appropriate elevation, um, on that as well. Uh, one of the other, uh, things that we will have to talk about and have conversations is the, build lateral lines. Um, so when we do discover, uh, what condition those lateral lines are in and how we approach, um, property owners. When we share with them that, um, your sanitary lateral is collapsed and it's in really bad shape. And we discovered that as part of our project. Uh, but that is your, that is the property owner's responsibility. Service lines are property owners' responsibilities.
And that's the line that goes from the main line to the house or the structure?
So that, that's another conversation and discussion that we're having as a project team and we'll bring a recommendation, uh, forward to city council of how we.
Okay.
Alright, that is the only, um, update I have. Very excited, uh, we talked a little bit about this during our, um, budget conversations. Um, we do have a new, um, management slash budget analyst starting on July eighth. We are very excited to welcome Jessica. She is a native Missourian who has spent the last couple of years in Kansas and is looking back to getting, looking forward to getting back to Missouri. Um, and then we will be doing interviews, uh, for the administrative services director slash assistant city manager on July tenth. So I'm very excited to have several qualified candidates. Um, we have a, pretty much an entire day of interviews slated. Uh, we are very excited to, um, get that position hired and, and get that, uh, new administrative services department stood up. Those are really the big updates out of the city manager's office. I'll turn it over to any other departments if they have any update.
Probably not, since we just went through budgets since four o'clock this afternoon. So everybody.
You guys have spent a solid four hours with us today. We do appreciate it.
We've earned our dollar a year.
You, you earned your dinner. Maybe same for your son, buddy. I didn't.
Yes.
We don't have anything further there.
Okay, with that, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
There you go, sir.